This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called. The notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's good to see some faces in the crowd. It's been a little while. As we always do, after reconvening from executive session, we'll have our prayer and pledge. And Mr. Newsom, it's your night.
Thank you. May we bow? I must raise this hand to my Father once again. We come to you thanking you for all the blessings that we receive from you. Lord, we know that we're not deserving of those blessings, but you continue to pour them into our lives. Lord, we pray continually for our school district that you will continue to watch over us and that we can make decisions that will be pleasing and acceptable to thee. Lord, we pray for the students and the teachers from a daily basis that you continue to watch over them and protect them from any harm or danger that may be occurring within their surroundings. Lord, we thank you for the individuals that serve on the board, that make decisions, and the administrative staff that make decisions also regarding the educational process of our students. Pray that we will always put that first and foremost in our minds and make decisions that will be beneficial to them to enhance their lives in the days ahead. Thank you for all your continued blessings. In the name of the Father, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Newsom. We do have some action coming out of executive session. And the first thing on our agenda is the Pete Elementary School principal. Dr. Crawford?
Absolutely. It's always exciting whenever you're able to bring someone before the board for consideration for the principalship that's served our school system and the campuses that she's been assigned to extremely well, not to mention the fact that she is a Tyler ISD product. It's my honor tonight to bring before you Lorena Brooks as the recommendation for principal at Pete.
All right. Well, thank you. You're gonna have your moment, Ms. Brooks.[182.01][182.01](Laughter). But before that, I will go ahead and unless there's any discussion or questions, entertain a motion on that item.
I move that we name Lorena Brooks as principal of Pete Elementary School.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it and the motion carries. Ms. Lorena Brooks, congratulations. Come on up.
Good. Good evening, everyone, to Dr. Crawford and the members of the board. It is an honor and a privilege to stand before you on tonight. I want to thank you all for this opportunity to serve as principal of Pete Elementary School. I am looking forward to continuing the great things that have been implemented under Ms. Chapa's leadership as we go forth to ensure successful student outcomes. Tonight with me, I have my strong support system here of family and friends and remarkable staff of Pete Elementary. If you would please stand. So again, I would like to thank you all for this opportunity as I continue to move forward with the Wildcat Way, as we continue to walk the talk. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Okay. Good deal. We also have item B. I'll go ahead and take a motion, entertain a motion on item B.
So move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it and the motion carries. All right. We are moving on to special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our April District Students of the Month. The elementary student of the month is Keston Williams, a kindergarten student at Dixie Elementary School. The secondary student of the month is Mabel Haker, a student in the Connect 18-plus program at Boasheer's Center for Exceptional Programs. At this time, please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected by the display of their unique, outstanding qualities. We believe these qualities lead to successful student outcomes both in and outside of the classroom. First, we would like to recognize Keston Williams, a kindergarten student at Dixie Elementary. Keston is a fantastic student. He is a leader in the classroom and helps his peers when they do group stations. During class, he stays focused and is always ready to learn.
Being a good student takes courage and responsibility, so it can be the smartest student that you can ever be. Some of my favorite things I like to learn is new words. I like to learn more stuff so I can be super smart.
Keston's curiosity for learning is shown in his reading ability. As a kindergartner, he is already reading at a second-grade reading level. He even reads to his peers and helps lead class discussions.
I like to read math books, science books, all kinds of stuff like that, so I can learn more.
Reading and sharing stories with others is a trait Keston plans to keep. He says he aspires to pursue acting and storytelling when he grows up.
There's 18,000 students in Tyler ISD. There's 9,000 that are what we call elementary-age students. And Keston, you have been named the Tyler ISD Elementary Student of the Month. Can we all give him a round of applause? Way to go, Keston! Congratulations, buddy. Proud of you.
Our secondary student of the month is Mabel Haker, who is part of the Connect program at the Boasheer's Center for Exceptional Programs. Mabel demonstrates leadership in her class and has a great work ethic. Because of her determination and passion for reaching her goals, she recently started attending post-secondary placement in the program.
When she comes to the transition program, we are honing the skills she has, so the sorting, organizing, the soft skills especially, being personable with others, the people she works with at Papa John's, the managers she'll interact with at CC's, the staff or customers maybe at Super One. Learning the steps to things, a lot of our students learning the steps to things, it's important so that they can kind of repeat those steps.
I have a morning meal, then work skills, then lunch, then home skills.
Mabel is determined to do her best and shows pride and excitement for what she has accomplished.
This month, your name is a Tyler ISD Student of the Month. We're so proud of you. You've been an exceptional student here at Boasheer's, and congratulations.
At Tyler ISD, we are committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and character. Well done, students, and keep up the good work.
We also have a few additional students to recognize this evening. Congratulations to Tyler Legacy High School senior Khalil Montague for winning first place in the Division One Super Heavyweight Class at the Texas High School State Powerlifting Association State Championship Meet. Khalil turned in 750 pounds on the squat, 585 pounds on the bench, and 550 pounds on the deadlift. In total, he finished with turning in 1,885 pounds. Congratulations to Khalil. Also from Legacy High School, we recognize junior Asia Burnley. Asia claimed a fifth-place finish in her weight class at the Texas High School Women's Powerlifting Association State Championship. Asia recorded 365 pounds on the squat, 185 pounds on the bench, and 385 pounds on the deadlift, and that totals 975 pounds. So congratulations to Asia too. And I feel like I need to go work out. From Tyler High School, we have some more students to congratulate. Two students for their achievements in the State Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference. Senior Francisco Leon Lozano placed fourth in the job interview category, and senior Cameron Ross placed fourth in public speaking. Both will compete next in the national conference held this summer. In addition, the Tyler High School Future Business Leaders of America chapter received first-place honors for the largest contribution towards the Endowment Scholarship Fund and first-place honors for the largest contribution per member for the Endowment Scholarship Fund. So we are congratulating FBLA sponsor Charmeshia Jackson and all FBLA students at Tyler High for this achievement. Now, we are going to recognize more MST Magnet School 7th grader Malcolm Jones. After earning impressive finishes at the East Texas Regional Science Fair and the Texas Science and Engineering Fair, Malcolm received an invitation to compete in the National Broadcom Masters Competition, which is the premier middle school science and engineering competition. Thirty finalists will be selected to compete for scholarship money and prizes. So congratulations and good luck to Malcolm. And now, we would like to celebrate our district teacher of the month, Laura Torres, a 6th-grade teacher at Hogg Middle School. Ms. Torres embodies what it means to be Razorback-ready. She is an exemplary teacher who also has a great attitude and takes on challenges with ease. Putting the needs of her students first, Ms. Torres regularly implements new strategies to impact student learning. She is truly a leader among the Razorback faculty, is a team player, and strives each day to become a better teacher. Congratulations, Ms. Torres. And this concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Just saying I called Cameron Ross, so I'm sure I...[753.23][753.23](Laughter).
You did. Well, it's so good to see all of our students succeeding in the ways that they do. 585 pounds on the bench. Salty. All right, now, we are moving on to public participation. We do have a few people that are going to speak tonight. I will just remind those speaking and those listening and those watching that we are, as a board, we can ask clarifying questions, but just be reminded that board members can't respond to any questions. It's kind of a legal thing. So the first person that we have is Keyston L. Renee, and I hope I, or Reese, maybe. Pardon me if I said that wrong. Can read the writing.
It's Reese.
Okay, Mr. Reese, how you doing?
I'm good. How you doing?
You're doing all right.
Okay, so today, I wanted to speak about the lack of a kitchen at Tyler High School. I was just curious to know, like, how did that happen when there seems to be an order, I would assume, when it comes to having a school built? And if that was a mistake that's made, you know, that's understandable, that's forgivable, but I think it's the lack of accountability for the admittance of that mistake. And it seems as if, instead of correcting it, you guys like just had food warmed up at Dogan and then shipped over to John Tyler? And if that's true, you know, I have a question for you. Like, how is it possible that, like, if kids aren't going to Dogan, why would you choose to use a cafeteria at a school no one is attending? How do we know that those, like, machines and sinks and stuff are clean and are being kept up with? And then, on top of that, when that food is being sent over to John Tyler, how do we know it's not spoiling or it's not cross-contaminating? Like, how are we accounting for that? How are we making things more efficient and healthy for our students? Because, you know, I went to John Tyler or Tyler High, and I remember lunch was the highlight of my day, especially going to the Mexican line. And I knew how much that meant to me and how much more energy I had when I went back to class. So I think that the student body currently, they're not having that ability or that opportunity to not only enjoy a good meal and conversate with their friends, but to have extra boost to finish their day. How can you expect them to achieve at the level that you need them to achieve to be productive citizens? So those are just some things that, you know, it kind of made me scratch my hair when I found out about it. And also, too, I really discovered it on the Facebook group page for John Tyler, and there's some comments that I just kind of wanted to read to you guys that I thought were important to mention. One of them says that all they do here is have food sitting above hot water. Nothing is ever fresh. Then there was another comment that said, "Seems like a working kitchen would be more important than a name change." And those two comments stood out a lot to me because they're very simple, they're to the point, and they don't seem very, like, underhanded or condescending. And hopefully, I hope those are some things that I think about after all of this is over because, you know, if you guys are in their shoes, I would assume, or I would hope, that you would want someone to correct that issue and deal with it in a way that would benefit, you know, the entire community that goes to that school. Because, you know, I wonder if the same thing is going on to the other school across town, and I highly doubt it is. And to me, that's something that's interesting that I would like to have looked at as well. So that's all I really got to say, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reese. Okay, next we have Ken Mass.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. How you doing?
Good, man.
Wanted to thank y'all for allowing me to come up here and speak today. I'm an alumni for John Tyler, class of '96. I just got, just a quick question you don't have to answer, but how many of y'all went to John Tyler graduate in this room? Raise your hand. So it don't look like a whole lot of y'all with the John Tyler there, okay? So that means a lot. I found out that John Tyler don't have a full kitchen. It's really important that these kids have a full meal. And from what I understood was, they don't have a full kitchen, they got, like, warmers. Now, I went to John Tyler, asked Mr. Lane about it, and he threatened to call the police on me. And I feel like that's a sign of disrespect to a person that went to John Tyler. Plus, I am a taxpayer here. And I feel like, as much money as I spend to TISD, y'all should have a full kitchen. If y'all could build a football field, indoor football field before a kitchen, that don't make any sense. Now, how many of y'all think a kid should have a hot meal in this room? Raise your hand. So y'all saying nobody should have a hot meal? Come on, now. Y'all not raising your hand? Y'all don't think nobody should have a hot meal?
I think that would qualify as a response, and I told you, we can't respond.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm looking at y'all. I'd just like to have them respond because if I come up to a school and ask a question to the principal, and he threatened me to call the police for a simple question, just a quick, simple question, I think it's really important for him to communicate with the community. Because my child graduated from John Tyler back in 2020, and I DJed a event at the cafeteria in 2019, and they were working on that kitchen. And it wasn't no indoor football field over there to the side. Now, you tell me there's an indoor football field over here, brand new, but you can't build a cafeteria? Come on, now. Y'all gotta do better. Y'all gotta do better. Mr. Andy, Burfield, you gotta step it up, baby. Yes, sir. But most definitely, a hot meal is really important. Now, y'all probably didn't want to raise your hand here, and if you didn't, that's a shame. That's really a shame because all the kids should be treated equally, and that's something that y'all not really doing. If you don't, if you think you're doing the right thing, and you think you treat these kids equally, how about y'all go over there to that school and look at how the kids act versus the legacy side? You go to John Tyler's side, they got cages. Kids are walking on cages. You can't climb over, you can't go under them. That's almost a sign of going to Smith County Jail. They're not animals. We gotta treat people like human beings here. Just because they're Hispanic, just because they're majority black, don't mean you gotta treat them that way. I just want to tell you all that. I thank y'all for y'all's time. I hope that touched y'all's heart. If it don't, God bless you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mass. Mr. Bonner, Terry Bonner. How you doing, Mr. Bonner?
I'm all right. How about you?
All right, man. Living the dream up here.
I know, right? Living the life, right? All right, my name is Terry Bonner, and I am speaking for, not as, the alumni from John Tyler. I'm speaking for parents of John Tyler students. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Justice League, John founder of. Justice League, please stand up. My co-founders and some of the members back there. We are a nonprofit and nonpartisan organization that advocates for equity and justice for historically marginalized disenfranchised and oppressed people in East Texas. One of the things that we wanted to ask you, this is the thing, I know that there's probably speculation, and the problem with speculation is, nobody knows what's going on. But the issue with that is, I feel like, we feel like TISD lets speculation goes on. So we are demanding that there be an answer or the public be addressed, not tonight, of course, but we are demanding that TISD and board trustees address the public on the cafeteria situation at John Tyler, or Tyler High. That right there is deplorable, is a slap in the face to black and brown populations. Not saying that those are the only populations going over there, going to school over there, but it just happens to seem like every time something like this happens in TISD, first of all, it gets swept up under the rug. Maybe that's because, you know, as they say, we don't complain or we don't say anything. But the Justice League is an organization that you really need to get used to. We are not going anywhere. We're gonna beat it until it's solved. So we are demanding that TISD Board Trustees, School Board, address the public and let the public know exactly why there is food being bused from a middle school to a high school. Let the public know exactly what happened, how it happened, before speculation runs amok. We are demanding that. Also, we are demanding that the redistricting process coming up that is upon us have full transparency to the public, especially black and brown populations. I'm not quite sure how TISD is going to do this, but this time around, redistricting needs to be, has to be, will be, and must be transparent to the entire public. If it is not, we have promises that we are going to keep. If you recall this summer, I was the one, my organization was the ones that told you not to get used to these seats if you are not advocating and doing what is best for the student. There are several other things we can address, but these two things in particular, I want the words "demand" to stick in your brains, not like that, not being disrespectful, but I want "we demand" an explanation to the public at large. Not one of those notes that you send home and everybody might know, might not know. We need y'all to make a press release and address the public as to why our students over at John Tyler's nutrition needs are not being met adequately. We are going to complain, we are complaining to the TEA and other organizations about this issue, and it seems, it seems, again, it seems that every time something unbalanced happens in this school district, it affects immensely black and brown populations. We are tired of that. We are specifically concentrating on the treatment or mal-treatment at this point of black and brown populations in TISD from not only the nutrition standpoint to this redistricting standpoint. We will not stand by idly while y'all reconfigure the district lines to suit your needs and suit the needs of Legacy and other schools like it. Again, that's just speculation. We demand transparency, so speculation does not run amok. Thank you very much. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. All right, now, moving along from public participation, we have the approval of minutes. Mr. Chair. A and B.
Mr. Chair. Could I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Newsom.
We do have, before the group leave, we do have construction update, and if it's possible and is on the agenda, if it's possible, if we could rearrange that so that they can actually hear the comments that we make regarding that before they leave? If they choose to leave, that's their choice, but...
On the agenda tonight, there is a construction update. If anybody cared to stick around to hear about the construction update, at both high schools, they could and maybe get some answers, so. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. So we do have some approval of minutes going on. Do I have a motion on those items?
I move that we approve minutes for March 4th and March 22nd.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries, ayes have it. We do have a continuous improvement in student outcomes, a little post-COVID educational recovery item. Dr. Crawford?
Absolutely. Continuous improvements, the first part of our agenda, and we start getting into the business of the meeting at night. Proud to present tonight our post-COVID educational recovery plan, more of an executive summary of that. We got Mr. Bitter that's going to actually be addressing this tonight, Assistant Superintendent of Administration Innovation. We've also got other administrators that will be available for comment and commentary and questions as they become available. It's really presenting to the public and to the board, what does our plan look like? And if the ESER funds are made available by the state legislature, what do we plan to do with some of those ESER funds, those COVID relief packages that were provided by Congress that are currently assigned to the state of Texas, et cetera? So, Mr. Bitter, we're gonna let you go ahead and take over while we can start this conversation.
All right, thank you, Dr. Crawford. Mr. Washington, members of the board, it is absolutely a pleasure to bring to you some information and a summary of our post-COVID educational recovery plan. I may at times defer to Dr. Davis, Ms. Ward, and Ms. Chapa to answer some questions that you may have or for some clarifications, but I'm gonna try to give you a really good look, comprehensive look at what we're trying to work towards coming up for the fall and even starting in the summer. Really, what we want to be able to do with this is put together a comprehensive plan to address a post-COVID gap that really, without some aggressive deployment of resources and strategies, you know, that gap may persist. It definitely will persist. We know that it's there, and we've got some things that we need to do to address it, and so this is, I think, a pretty good look at our plan to try and do some of that stuff. And I think you'll pick up on some themes through the course of the presentation. First, just a little look at how we've kind of grouped our campuses to be able to address their needs. Really, this is a way to provide resources and programming and support to campuses that have students with similar needs. Really, just allows us to address the risk loads and assessments and the factors that contribute to our current performance on some of those campuses. So I'll let you take a look at those. I think it's really no secret how some of those are grouped together as we look at those things, but if you move left to right, you're gonna see that some of the deployment of resources will be consistent with this table for our campus clusters. So one of the main things that we can do, we all talk about it all the time, and we know that it's there, to close these gaps and improve the experience for our students is just raise the level of instruction. We want to continue to improve and provide high-quality instruction for our students. And so, top on the list right there is increased professional collaboration among our teachers. So we're working towards some master schedules that include more professional learning time, increased coaching and feedback cycles. We're really looking to build and improve teacher capacity. We've got a lot of great people working hard for our kids, and so this is a way that we can kind of provide them time to work with each other, to hone in on their skills and really be prescriptive in the way that they look at and address student needs. We're gonna add some academic support. We're looking at adding four content-based personnel assigned to specific campuses at different levels, really to, for them to be very specific and prescriptive about what they're going out and doing on our campuses. Everybody can't be responsible for everything all the time, and we've got to have some specialists that get out there and really provide targeted support at some of our campuses. Next there, you're gonna see data-driven instruction protocol, and really want to stress this, you've all heard data-driven instruction before, that's something that's been thrown around, you know, for a while in education, but this is a specific protocol. It is very prescriptive in the way that we look at student performance and data skills associated... Uh, skills associated with that performance and data, and then the things that we put in place. And so that's why it sits there, we believe that that's very important. It's been seen to have a great impact on the campuses where it uh, is in play. And we hope to expand its use uh, certainly across our neediest campuses. Uh, personalized learning experiences for our lift students. You know, we, we've talked a little bit about lightning improvement for Tyler and you're gonna continue to hear lift. And lightning improvement for Tyler uh, as we move forward. Uh, but really, you know, it's kind of like going to the doctor. You know, everybody that's sick doesn't need the same medicine or everybody that, you know, is trying to work out and, and accomplish something doesn't need the same plan. And so, when we've, we've got to be prescriptive in the way that we address the needs of our students. And um, look at the different, the different ways that we can do that. Um, and so some of our data boards are, are um, ways that we assess our students and identify the skill gaps that are present. Uh, will really help us do that. And so, uh, that is gonna be an effort that you see a, a lot from us this year. Uh, and then through professional learning, professional trainings, you know, we, we've got to. If we want these things to take place on our campuses, we've got to provide the training and support for our teachers and our campus staffs to be able to do those things. And so that's gonna be reflected in our professional learning plan, uh, the P D that our teachers take place uh, or take advantage of this summer. And then on throughout the school year. All right, next slide, and this one is, is certainly a big one. You know, the things that are important and the things that we're trying to accomplish, we've got to direct resources at those things. Uh, and so a tiered resources deployment uh, is certainly in order. Not all of our campuses need the same resources and, and the same things and their students don't all have the exact same needs. Uh, and so we've got to be pretty strategic at the, at, about the way that we do that so that our campuses can be successful. A top's on the list and something that certainly will be a part of the theme of, of this presentation and, and has been here in Tyler for a few years. But structured literacy resources, uh, really looking at a scripted, scripted, structured literacy resources. That can help us improve, um, you know, reading and enhance the, the literacy efforts for our students. Uh, prescriptive online solutions, uh, you know, kind of narrowing down the scope of what we were providing folks. Uh, and making sure that we can support those things so that our kids have an opportunity to be successful. And where they're not, uh, we have the opportunity to maybe identify why they're not and address that specific need. Campus reading support, uh, one of the things that we'll talk about a little bit later, uh, from a personnel standpoint. Is some campus reading specialists uh, on our campuses that really need it the most. And we've certainly um, got some of those. We've got a job posted for that and are looking for quality folks to come in and really uh, take the reins of the reading efforts on our campuses. Really provide quality instruction for kids, uh, not just a reading coach with the staff. But to really get in there, work with kids individually and in small groups. Uh, and be very uh, intensive and targeted at the way they address those kids' needs. We're looking to add an additional teacher at specific campuses. And there is, I think if you've seen in your packet, you've seen that table, so we'll recap some of those things at the end. But additional teacher at specific campuses and two, two priorities there. Uh, to increase that professional learning community time and to reduce class sizes. Uh, really in targeted areas where it's needed the most. And so that may look a little different on some campuses than others. It may be a second grade reading teacher uh, on a certain campus. It may be a fourth grade math teacher on a certain campus. But that'll be something where campus principals and teams work with their supervisors to try to identify what is the area where we need it the most. And how can we plug a great person in there to try to fill that gap? Uh, we're gonna add a couple of instructional paraprofessionals to provide acceleration for our students. And so they will work specifically with those reading specialists. Uh, and get in and do the same thing, pulling small groups, working with kids individually. Uh, but really you're gonna see that, that effort really there targeted at literacy. Uh, they'll also serve to provide uh, relief so that we can add that P L C time into the master schedule. Uh, our secondary folks have really taken advantage of some quality professional learning community time. And we want that to filter down into the elementaries and are looking to provide the resources to help them do that. Uh, and then we want to add an additional administrator at secondary campuses. You know, we've had uh, times where uh, we function with a higher administrative capacity than we currently are. And so, in an effort to address our kids' individual needs, uh, to uh, continue to work in some of the social emotional learning components. Some behavior uh, plans, different things like that. And then also provide a lot of administrative support for uh, that P L C time and for improving instruction. Uh, anything that is important is gonna take a lot of time here. Uh, and so it's, it's certainly necessary that we have some administrative leadership in the instructional environment. Supporting our teachers and master teachers and uh, P L Cs and leading the charge, especially as we look at some of those specific protocols. Okay, professional learning and uh, Dr. Hanson, I will invite you to jump in here if you choose. Uh, but I'll let you just take a peek at that. Uh, really what I would stress is that this is, uh, I think as targeted and coherent and strong a plan as we've had. And it is directed at the things that we've been talking at that are, talking about that are important. Uh, it is very heavy on literacy and reading. Uh, you'll notice that across the board, uh, and it's um. You know, it is heavy on cooperative learning and small group instruction. Uh, that is something where we've seen some success on campuses. Uh, bringing that in, it allows much more personalized contact with our kids. Uh, gives them all a greater opportunity to be heavily engaged in the instructional environment uh, and in the learning environment. And so, that is something that we're gonna invest time and resources in, uh, and ensure that it's taking place across our campuses. And then with, with blended learning, you know, we've talked a lot about blended learning in, in different capacities through the course of the last couple of years. And as we moved um, last spring break, uh, kind of into our COVID shutdown. But we've got to get better at blended learning, what that looks like uh, on our campuses, uh, how we utilize those resources that are there. And so we're gonna have to provide a lot uh, of additional training and support and guidance for our teachers to ensure that that effort is successful. We have moved to one-to-one and that's a great resource for our district. And we are looking to maximize that resource uh, as we move forward. Okay, any questions there on that? There's, there's a lot of stuff up there, but any questions on that particular piece? Okay, a big one here and, and something we've talked a lot about, uh, certainly in our shop. But social emotional learning, that's been something that has really taken shape, I think, over the last few years. And we've really seen the importance of some of these supports as our kids have come back to us and, and some of the gaps that they're trying to address. Uh, we uh, kind of understand a little bit of the mental health impact that um, the last fourteen, fifteen months have had. And just the needs of our kids in general, you know, being a kid is tough. And all of them have different needs and they're all dealing with different things. And so trying to put them in position that they can have the best learning experience possible is important. Uh, this is gonna be a huge effort. We're looking to add some social emotional learning. Uh, we're gonna call them counselors, uh, but we're looking at, at L P C types, uh, L P C associates. Uh, to really address uh, the needs of our kids in a little bit different way. And this is something that I think is gonna be very important for our campuses. Uh, provide a lot of support in a small group and individual setting uh, for kids who may not get that time one-on-one with an adult otherwise. And so this is something that we are certainly very excited about. Um, and really hoping that, that this takes off and does what we need to do, to do for our kids. You see kind of some of the responsibilities that they would have there. Uh, also working with campus leadership and counseling staff, uh, there's a team there and this, this person certainly needs to be a part of that team. Uh, continued implementation of Leader and Me, that's a great resource for our district. Uh, and trying to get it into every classroom, uh, where it is uh, certainly housed is important. And so we want to continue to expand that, take full advantage of that uh, in the year. And that addresses a lot of the leadership components, social emotional learning components uh, that we're looking uh, to see for our kids. All right, so extended time, non-traditional and additional opportunities. We have talked here about the look of the Bolter Rose City Summer Campsite. Uh, some additional summer opportunities, uh, summer bridges, jump starts. Different camp-type settings where we can get our kids in before the school year starts and try to address some of those gaps. Make sure that they are prepared to start the next school year. That first six weeks is a critical time for our kids. You know, the success uh, and/or failure that they experience in that time will have a lot to do with the way that they function through the course of the school year. And so making sure that they're front-loaded and ready to begin, uh, ready to start successfully is important. That, that time is gonna be huge uh, in determining what their outcomes are in March, April and May. Uh, extended instructional minutes for uh, E L A R and math, very important. Uh, we're, we're crafting master schedules and looking at ways to, to add additional time, uh, certainly for those two blocks. Uh, so that we can get, uh, try to, to fill that gap faster, so to speak. Uh, give them more time with those folks, really allow for more, again, small group and collaboration time and individualized instruction. Uh, you guys have heard about the Tyler Optimal Performance Teacher Program and the Teacher Incentive Allotment. Uh, that is something that is gonna take place on our, our ACE campuses, uh, those five elementary schools and then HOG and Bolter. And uh, we see that as an avenue for us to recruit and retain and incentivize quality performance on those campuses. Uh, something that uh, we hope uh, gains some traction, allows us to uh, really strengthen, strengthen those staffs. Um, and help them start moving the needle for their kids. And then Blade, our blended learning and digital education, uh, that certainly would be a non-traditional opportunity. And right now we are uh, looking at, at what that's gonna look like for Tyler. Again, I mentioned that before with blended learning that we do have to get better. That is something, a, a resource that will take us a little while to get comfortable with. But there are a lot of tools uh, there at our disposal and things that we can take advantage of. And so we're uh, again, excited about that opportunity. Uh, Dr. Crawford talks at times about the opportunity to write a great story. And I think a lot of these things are uh, components that will allow us, allow us to do that. So the, kind of the breakdown and a little bit of a summary, um, of the personnel that we're looking to add uh, in different places. Uh, I do want to point out uh, one thing there, the S E L support. I think we have found a way and, and are going to uh, add that to our tier-two campuses as well. Uh, so it would be taking place across thirteen campuses rather than, uh, rather than the seven that are listed there. You know, you see some different things in there, the additional academic support. Uh, two of those folks from academic support specifically dedicated to our ACE campuses. So to the, the five campuses that you saw there in that first cluster. Providing the additional teacher for our ACE campuses and HOG and Bolter. Uh, really to, again, contribute to high-need areas, uh, maybe put some smaller classes into play. And uh, make sure that we have enough P L C time so that we can plan for uh, and implement effective instruction there. The additional administrator there at all secondary campuses. And then a breakdown of our uh, professional learning initiatives that we have going. Uh, Reading Horizons is that uh, scripted structured literacy. And so we're looking at that, uh, that's almost half of our campuses, eleven elementary campuses and then HOG and Bolter. Uh, Social Emotional Conference taking place district-wide. A huge one there at the top is Kagan Cooperative Learning. Um, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with that. I see Ms. Atkins nodding her head and I think she is certainly uh, familiar with that part. But uh, raising of the level of engagement is gonna be key to uh, improving the educational environment for our kids, all of our kids. And so, that cooperative learning and Kagan structures is uh, big at the secondary level, getting kids up and moving. Uh, allowing them to be really uh, active and take ownership in what they're doing in the classroom. Uh, our reading academies across our elementary campuses. Uh, our workshop model district-wide, uh, you know, going back to some of the, the targeted uh, prescriptive instruction and, and dealing with the small collaborative groups. And then that D D I protocol and framework at the eleven elementaries in tier one and two and HOG and Bolter. Uh, and so that is a, that is a significant effort, the D D I framework and, and implementing that protocol. But it, it is tough work, but it is good work and it should make a great difference for our kids. So that is the end of the uh, presentation. Certainly open to questions or uh, respond to anything that you have for us.
I want to ask a question about the counselors. Will everyone at each campus or will they chair a counselor?
I think right now what we're looking at is a little bit of both, uh, for our larger campuses and larger group of students. Uh, providing um, an individual counselor for those campuses. And then we will have some smaller campuses that do, you know, have an opportunity where they'll be sharing someone. And that'll be in addition to their, you know, to their school counselor and the normal uh, leadership structure they've got in place there.
Want to talk about spending the time for E L R and M L R? How much time are they spending in E L R now and how much time are they going to expand it?
Right now, we're really focused on elementary. So right now, you know, elementary and reading, we have ninety minutes, but we're looking at doing between one-twenty to one-fifty. And it's about sixty minutes for math currently, but we're looking at, again, one-twenty to one-fifty.
So will you be taking away from something else in order to?
We're going to integrate some other subject areas within that, but not really taking away from.
And I will, Ms. Atkins, say on the secondary level, uh, at our middle schools, that is something over the last couple of years. We've, you know, moved to do to try to provide our kids ninety minutes a day, uh, math and reading. Uh, and so I wouldn't say that it is a hundred percent, but it's fairly close.
We're also not, Ms. Atkins, we're not gonna be handcuffed by tradition. They're prisoners of the transportation system, for lack of a better term. Just because you, you started, you've started at four every, or at eight A M. every year and you gotta get out by three. Uh, in fact, um, not too long ago, as, as late as six years ago, we were actually. At the bare minimum of minutes as far as our elementary went. Uh, it was because we were just stuck in that rut for thirty years because we always done it that way. So, especially at our ACE campuses, what we affectionately call J Pro, which is Jones, Austin, Pete, Orr and Ramey, or Ramey and Orr, to make that acronym work. Um, that is not off the table. Uh, a, a different schedule, a different transportation system that serves those campuses. Um, a longer school day, because let's remember, they're also uh, our top T A campuses as well. So whenever you decide to go to work at those campuses, you understand that that is gonna be a, a non-traditional innovative uh, way to do that. Now, is that gonna happen this year? That's still T B D as far as the budget goes, along with some of the other logistical, excuse me, logistical concerns that we do have. So, um, as far as the time goes, as far as being able to squeeze that in, taking away from other subjects. There are opportunities there to where it's purely on mathematics and reading. Integration's important, but we're also gonna be looking at the amount of time we're at campus as well.
Uh, in regards to the plan, it looked like it's very comprehensive. My concern was uh, a lot of these things were already implemented within the district. So, we're restructuring it to address the past COVID incident with the students not being in the classroom. How are we restructuring it? I hear you saying we're adding administrative staff, maybe a few teachers. But overall, from your perspective, how's this different than what we've been doing in the past?
Well, that, that's a pretty broad question, so I'm gonna do my best to address it and if I don't, uh, let me know. So I think that what we're really trying to do is just be much more targeted and strategic. We do have a lot of these things taking place in the district in certain places. Uh, but we want to, uh, we want to reduce silos and pockets of excellence. Uh, and, and expand our equity and access to really quality stuff for all of our kids across the district. And so the things that we've seen to work, we want to make sure that we are implementing those in the places where we need it to work the most. Uh, some of that stuff is gonna take some additional staff, some additional administrative support. Uh, we are gonna get very prescriptive with, uh, like the Reading Horizons, like some of the online solutions that we're gonna offer. Uh, sometimes, sometimes when that thing gets too broad, autonomy can be a limiting factor. Because we're gonna find some things that work better than others. And so we really want to make sure that those things are being applied uh, to the campuses that need it the most. And they, and they, some of those campuses, they need different things and they need them more than others sometimes. And, and we've got to address those gaps and just be very open and honest and transparent about the way that we're improving teacher capacity on those campuses. And making sure that we have quality collaboration time on those campuses and be, being very prescriptive with the services that we're providing the kids and teachers on those campuses.
I'll give one example.
Okay.
Our secondary campuses have a P L C every day for the core content areas. How we're not knocking it out of the park, if that is a magic treatment, it dumbfounds me. Because our elementary campuses where the basics are learned and the standards are learned, where everything is developed and grown. Have not had a P L C time every day. The principals have been very creative to find a way for that to happen. Um, let's take the J Pro, the, the ACE schools. Our mission, our goal is, is to have two to three times per week where they have a specific P L C period. That is something we have not been having over there. So, if you're. So, if you're talking about what's new, I think that's kind of what you're, really what your question is. That is something that is going to be different in, in the areas where our risk loads are the highest. Does that mean that an A campus that is rolling with what they've got right now, or a B campus, let's take Jack and Douglas, two very different demographics there that are rolling, the needs are not there right now, because they have had effective Tier One instruction, which is what matters the most, that classroom teacher instruction, along with great leadership. Not saying that those other campuses haven't, but their risk loads have certainly impacted the child's ability to achieve as quickly as others. So, that's what we're trying to do, is provide a little bit more of resources in specific areas that we have not had prior to. It's like the additional counseling, the more of the LPC, is that right? Is that the right?
Yes, sir.
Am I using the right acronym? That's not a district-wide initiative. That is going to be very specific in pockets of our school system that, where they're needed the most. Am I saying that correctly, y'all? Chime in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I think that's what he's kind of asking is, instead of talking all his general terms, what are we specifically going to do here in regard to that? Now, and let's not forget this, we are a B school system. We were a B school system rolling into the pandemic, we're at 85. We have higher expectations of that. We're not satisfied with that B, but we're in a whole lot better shape coming out of this pandemic because of what we've chosen to do and how we rolled into it than a lot of our peers. So, we think this lightning improvement for Tyler can really take us to the next level if we're looking to be that exemplary school system. So, I don't want this presentation to come off as it's doom and gloom, that we haven't been doing, that we hadn't been successful, because we have. And I'll fight anybody on that in regard to arguing with me that case. I feel very proud of that, because there's a lot of folks in this room that don't remember 2013 and 14, we had 11 low-performing campuses. I think everybody here does, but I'm just saying, we, we certainly are not looking to go that way. We're looking to go to continue the momentum forward with those resources targeted where we think that they're needed most. That's what's different.
That stance I like, because I'm very concerned about it. I think that we've done excellently in the past years, but my goal is A, you know, I think we have the resources to achieve that. I think that we need to push for it. Coming from a C to a B, or whatever we were before, it's good, but A is what we should be doing. I think we have the ability to do it, and I'd like to see us achieve that.
It's right there for us to grow.
So, that, that's my issue. And I know a lot of these resources, and I like the concept that they are evaluating the resources to determine what's effective in particular areas, because that's what we should be doing. And I, and I think in relation to, I think you said something about the block scheduling. I think that that's essential, looking at the campuses and determining what's working within those particular campuses, and if it can be applied to another campus to make it work, so that it can be successful. And I think that you're going that direction. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I love that you're adding back reading intervention teachers. That's awesome. And I always enjoy PLCs. We've got a lot done in PLCs. We've looked at a lot of information in PLCs. We've taught teachers in PLCs. And I'm glad we're extending that investment to elementary.
Some elementaries, targeted elementaries, some, some folks are rolling. We just, we can't afford to do it district-wide, that's the thing. And you brought up the reading intervention teachers. Let's make this public announcement, we cannot have reading teachers that go in there and play reading.
Oh, no.
Okay? So, I just want to be very clear about that. That's one reason we kind of cleansed ourselves of that initiative a while back. We tried to do it on our own. We're not getting what we need out of it. So, we are bringing those experts back to have a, their, their hand in the, the school's accountability. It, you know, I always get on silent sustain reading and reading out, you know, the teacher reading to the, to the group. And I understand we need to really inspire kids when we do those things, but it has to be the science of reading that we have been committed to over the last three years, that those reading interventionists, I've tried to stay away from that word, but that's, that's, you're right, that we are bringing those back, that is, that is what's additional here, and we're excited about that.
So, you, you have three tiers you've divided these schools into, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it sounds to me like the JPRO schools plus the other two middle schools are going to get more resources through personnel and programs directed their way based on their need. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, I just think that it's important to point out that, you know, when, when our board is criticized for only doing things for, you know, South Tyler, or whatever it is, I know that the JPRO schools, to use the speaker's term earlier, they're 100% brown. So, you're asking us to put extra resources to favor one part of town over another based on need. Is that right?
Yes, sir. We are scientifically bringing to the board to target resources, additional resources to the, to the pockets of our community that have higher risk loads than others. Yes, sir.
And I support that, and I think that's great. I just think we need to make sure that everybody understands, you know, we're doing that here, and we're going to try to bring everybody up through this, through this intervention. So, I appreciate that.
I had sort of like a series of questions. And I, I think they should probably be directed to Dr. Kanson, because they're concerning the reading academies. First of all, the reading academies, that is a program through TEA that the teachers complete on their own time? Is that correct?
So, we have a blended model that we are doing in Tyler. So, yes, in most districts, they are sort of completing it on their own time, but we're doing more of a blended model, similar to, you know, what we're trying to do with children. So, they, they complete modules, and then we do some face-to-face work with them on their campus. With, we deploy the reading academy coaches to the campus to do some face-to-face work, so that then they know how to implement the theoretical work the next day.
Okay. Well, that's good. And are all of the K3 teachers required to take part in that?
Every K through five teacher is required to take part in it, with the exception of a specials teacher, which would be fine arts, PE. But, but every other professional K5 profession, I mean, teacher is required to do that, including the principal.
Okay. Good. I like that. And how many hours? Do you have hours?
It, it requires about 60 hours of actual work. It's a very comprehensive program. So, it, they give us 11 months to complete it. We usually try to complete it in 10, so that the teachers are finished by the time school's out. This year, TEA has given us a timeline that they're telling us we need to stick by, because we did try to, we, we sort of did try to speed it up so that the teachers were finished, and they did. So, we'll, they're giving us some flexibility, but not as much coming up this year.
When they get finished with it, do they get a certificate of completion? Or there's not an additional?
They get a certificate of completion when they're finished. So, they will be reading academy certified, and they don't have to redo it as long as they, you know, yeah, they, at this point, they're not having refresher courses for teachers that they have to do. Now, we do that embedded in our professional learning, so that we can keep that current. But TEA is not requiring refreshers at this point.
Okay.
We'll see what the legislation does. There's, there is some talk of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. It is, it feels like a really great place to be when, you know, you remember what Dr. Crawford's talking about, where it seemed like there was so many things that needed to be fixed, and it was, you sometimes had that feeling of being insurmountable, and now we're to the point where we're drilling down and trying to get at some specific needs that some of our students have. I think it's a really great place to be in, and I really am proud of you guys for figuring this, this part out.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just piggyback a little bit on that. I feel like we were, I'm not saying we're at the base of a mountain in 2013, but we were lower on the mountain, and I feel like we've steadily been climbing. And the funny thing is, when you're, sometimes when you're climbing a mountain, you're getting close to the top, but there's some trails that go through the woods, and you, you can't really see that you're that high. And when you get out of that trail, you notice you're at 13,000 feet. And I feel like right now, we're kind of, we're pretty far up, you know, and we might be going down a trail where it's going to take a little work, and we might not be able to see it. But if we come out of this thing and with a good plan, I, I think we'll be able to look out on God's creation and be at the top and be proud of what we're done. So, I'm, I'm hoping it works. It sounds like a good plan, and I, you know, I think just like diets, you know, you're only as good as, as your dedication to that diet. So, hopefully, we'll pull this off and, and everybody will succeed.
Yeah. Fidelity's a big part of this. Fidelity with our reading instruction, we talk about the prescription, we talk about the dedication of whenever we do assign these reading interventionists there, whenever we do assign these LPCs there, to help with some of the restorative things that we need for our kids that might have some social emotional learning issues or behavior issues that are getting in the way of learning for all kids. Yeah, there's got to be fidelity. You can't just occupy that position and not do the work, the DYJ, the do your job.
I know, that's right.
And so, that's kind of where we're, we're having this opportunity. Yes, the funding needs to come from the feds, if it is truly going to happen, come from the state. But we have some other ideas about if that does not come through, about how we're going to be able to pull this off funding-wise as we work through the budget process. Remember, we reduced 60 FTE positions this last year in order to prepare for what we thought was going to be a pretty tragic economy. And God blessed us that that did not happen in regard to school funding. And so, we've got that kind of hanging out there, too. So, as we, we're introducing the plan today, we'll talk about how to fund it in the next few months as we go forward.
Any further questions, comments?
Just to come in, I think that we have a head start and aspect that our kids were, were in school, and we bought them back early enough that they didn't go down as low as they could have gone by being at home with the, you know, in-home learning. I think that we, I think that we made the right decision by getting our kids back into the classroom, and that will definitely give us a jump on some of the other districts that were not able to do that in the aspect of, our kids won't be as far behind as some of the other districts. And I think that was a great move.
Well, very, again, we've had this conversation before. Appreciate our, our teachers and our students and our parents for believing in that initiative to come back to school. We've got some benefits here. We're not stacked on top of each other. Our density in our community allows for our COVID numbers to not be quite what they are in, in other places. So, I can understand, if I was in a different location, I might not have been as aggressive from the, from the superintendent's chair, but appreciate the board's support on that. Again, the, the parent's support and with our reasonable protocols. I mean, we could have gone really haywire politically either way on our protocols, and we, we stayed the course because we valued students being in school, watching the data, understanding the science behind it, and trying to, trying to be free from any type of ideological statement. I can't tell you how proud I am of our community for that. So, thank you for saying it, so I can, once again, talk about how great our teachers, our students, and our parents were with this.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bitter, and everybody else. Okay, we're moving on to our business legal finance consent agenda. We will pull Item B, so we can talk about gifts and donations. But I will go ahead and entertain a motion on Items A, C, D, E, F, and G.
I move that we approve all items except B.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a second? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Now, we'll go back to B. Every, every month, we're fortunate enough to pull gifts and donations, and this is the same. So, go ahead and tell us about it.
Yeah. For seven years, every time I show up somewhere, it'll be a board meeting or an event in Tyler, especially in support of our teachers, I always see Cooperative Teachers Credit Union. And I always, when I run into them, I say, imagine seeing y'all here, because they're here every time that we have something. It's great to have them back, since we're kind of opening up a little bit. But tonight, in the amount of $33,500, you have CTCU, their foundation is presenting a big old check and a little bit of a PR opportunity here in regard to providing that for us. So, come on up, CTCU, and let's get a big picture with the board. You want to address the board real quick and just say hello to them, since you are bringing that amount to our school system?
Board members of Tyler ISD, Dr. Crawford, imagine seeing you here.
Yeah.
Just very appreciative to be here. Cooperative Teachers Credit Union was founded in 1953. Our very first office was actually at the John Tyler Teachers Workroom. So, we've been around for a while. Not only have we always had a passion for teachers, and we were founded by teachers, even though we are a credit union now, that is now open to the community, our passion will always be for educators. And we are founded in Tyler, and so therefore Tyler and Tyler ISD always hold a special heart, special place in our heart for us. And so, yes, we are very proud to offer $33,000, $33,500 for Teacher of the Year, Convocation, multiple other things, and we're very happy to do it.
Thank you so much. Sometimes our community wonders how these things get funded. Those are called enterprising funds, as far as what we, we'd like to call them internally. But thank you so much for everything that they do in regard to that, because we do have pretty cool convocations and Teacher of the Year banquets and things like that, and we couldn't do it without y'all.
Absolutely. Let's take a picture.
Take a picture. There we go. Come on up.
Once again, thank you Cooperative Teachers Credit Union Foundation. Moving on to our curriculum, instruction, and consent. Actually, I need to approve that gift. I'm learning. I'll go ahead and.
Figure it out.
I move we approve the gift from Cooperative Teachers Credit.
Thank you, Mr. Bergfield. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Now, we can move on to our curriculum, instruction, and consent agenda, and I don't think we're going to pull any of these. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for A through G.
So, move.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, we're coming up to superintendent staff reports, and I see on here, we have a construction update. A lot going on in Tyler ISD with construction of two high schools, and I thought I heard earlier, some people maybe mentioned something about what was going on at, at one of those high schools as far as our construction goes. I think it would be a good opportunity to talk about some of that, too.
Thank you. You really don't need to hear from me, because we have Mr. Beddingfield and Ms. Jones. We have two videos to show you tonight, and I believe we're going to stay in tradition, ladies first, with Legacy. But just for your information, it's been seven months since we gave a construction update, so there's been a lot going on since COVID and COVID and everything else. So, enjoy, and we'll answer any questions you have once, once we're through.
Tyler Legacy High School faculty, staff, and students started the school year in a newly constructed academic building. The three-story building provides over 400,000 square feet of state-of-the-art technology, classrooms. classrooms, six teacher workrooms, media center, lecture hall of 90 seating capacity, collaboration spaces on each floor level, life skills, introductory classes in career and technology, fine arts, courtyard and cafeteria space. After the successful completion of the newly renovated competition gym and added lobby with new concession, the indoor sports teams have enjoyed playing games in the new space this school year. From 2017, when construction first began, to March of 2021, construction has entered the last phase of the project. By August of 2021, all exterior sports will be completed on schedule and within budget. The project will be completely finished once exterior sports are finished. Exterior turf field sports include the following: practice soccer field, softball, baseball, eight tennis courts, and a 4,000-square-foot concession building. Currently, turf has been installed for practice soccer, softball fields, and batting cage areas for softball. Softball and baseball include dugouts, batting cages, bullpens, and scoreboard. The tennis courts are poured and fences are up throughout sports complex area. Lights are up and running for the field sports. We are finishing up the competition gym, new locker rooms, and office areas. Ceiling grays will soon be installed throughout the rooms. There is a junior varsity and practice gym, and the JV gym has telescopic bleachers on one side of the room that seats 500 capacity. Painters will soon start to work in the area and scoreboards will be up in a few weeks. Windows are already installed. The indoor athletic center is a turf field with a weight room for students to work out as needed. Indoor athletic center has a simple saver system that's installed, which is a high R-value installation for metal buildings that also provides fall protection when properly installed. As of right now, we've started installing insulation and metal roofing on the southeast side of the building. The last parking lot of the northwest side of campus will be poured soon, which will complete all the campus parking. Also, other areas that will be completed by August are the athletic training room, lobby for performing arts center, and the black box theater. I would like to sincerely thank the taxpayers for all your support and encouragement over the years. This concludes our construction update for Tyler Legacy.
Good evening, Tyler ISD, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Crawford. Let's take a look at the construction progress at Tyler High School since our last update in October of 2020. I will be available to answer any questions you may have at the end of this video. As we fly over the campus from south to north, the first stop we will make is the newly completed and occupied indoor athletic complex. This facility has hosted student activities since December and it includes a 70-yard interior playing surface, batting cages, weight room, and the athletic training center. Next, we will see the renovation progress of the football field house. This facility will be completed in May and will have the capacity to house freshman JV and varsity football programs. Now, we will take a tour of the existing A and B halls. This renovation is the last piece to the puzzle on the academic portion of the campus and provides the connection corridors to allow a majority of the students and all interior transition from class to class. The library and media center is accessed by a grand stairway leading from the main lobby. Numerous student collaboration spaces have exciting views of the newly renovated courtyards. This wing includes general education classrooms and career and technology labs. Next on the update is the newly completed Phase Two of the cafeteria. This section includes a stage and a video projector with theatrical lighting. We are now in Phase Three of the café construction and it will be completed for the fall of 2021 semester. Above the cafeteria space is the athletic locker room area. Renovation is underway here to transform this existing locker room space into coaches' offices and lockers for baseball, softball, soccer, tennis, track, PE, and cheer. Now let's take a visit through the renovation progress of the kitchen and food service area. The construction team has completely removed the old kitchen down to the dirt subgrade and installed a new slab with plumbing and electrical infrastructures. Walls have been framed to create the food preparation area and the five serving lines. Building finishes will begin soon and the purchased equipment will be installed and readied for service in August of 2021. Exterior sports field construction is underway with baseball and softball fields graded in preparation for turf installation. Field lighting has been installed and perimeter field fencing will start soon. Last, the renovation of the varsity gym is underway and has really transformed this space into a modern collegiate-style coliseum. Wood floors are being finished and connection to the previously finished gym entry lobby is being completed and major restroom upgrades are nearing completion. We have three remaining phases to complete on the Tyler High School project and we are looking forward to the final completion in August of this year. Thank you again for allowing me to provide you with an update on the construction progress here at Tyler High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beddingfield, as well. Board, turn it back over to you.
Sure. If anybody has any questions on, I guess we'll go ahead and, since Legacy was first, just if anybody has any questions or comments about that one in particular, since that video was first, we'll just go ahead and entertain those. I noticed you preemptively added into the video the question that I always ask. So I really don't have a question to ask since you've said that we are on track to be completed on schedule and within budget.
Yes, sir, we are.
Let me add an asterisk to that. Just like with every construction project, as we get towards the end, we are rushing to get that, to meet that goal. So we feel good about it, but we're now at the back end of it. Just like I said in 2015, dang, it's upon us and we are hustling like crazy and depending upon the weather. We do think we're going to have, we do know we're going to have all the academic spaces ready to go. Certainly the kitchen, the kitchen space at Tyler High along with the renovations of any cafeterias. So everything that a student's going to touch as far as academic goes or the school day goes, we're ready to go. The one thing we are concerned about, and we're just going to be transparent about that, are our athletic fields and having those finished. But if we're not there yet, we are going to be very close to be able to do that. But we're still going to have two football fields at Tyler High with the, counting the indoor facility. And then our baseball and softball fields are really close. So it's the additional practice field I think we're kind of waiting on because of some staging issues in regard to the weather and COVID. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. Okay, good. Sorry, I blended both projects there.
It's a blended learning type of years. We're used to it. Anybody else on Legacy? I'll say it looks incredible. Drove by there today and it just does my heart good to see those athletic fields right by the loop. I think it'll bring you good energy to town, see people driving by and seeing kids being active at a new campus. So yeah, it's looking great over there. Okay, moving on to Tyler High. Anybody have any questions or comments for anybody regarding the construction at Tyler High?
Yeah, I can. I'll take the mic. That's why.
No, man, it's our turn. No, no, I'm sorry, I meant board.
Let me maybe address his concerns in regards to a report on the kitchen. I think that that's the biggest concern right now. So I know that I've had an opportunity to tour that area and Ms. Atkins has too. We both went along with Commissioner Hampton to the campus shortly after we heard the controversy regarding the kitchen. And I think that we were satisfied with the explanation and I think it is appropriate for us to give an explanation to the general public so that they are aware of what's going on and how it happened. So if Mr. Loper or anyone of you could.
I'll go ahead and run down a list of questions I had. And then maybe through that, we can answer a few questions that have come before us previously. But so I will ask, you know, is every kid getting a hot meal during the day?
Well, actually, in typical fashion, we try to predict the questions that are going to be asked. So I came prepared with a couple of extra photos just in the back pocket, just so we could show some of the things that may be asked. Joseph, if you don't mind pulling those up. So a couple of additional photos that are in regards to this subject. Just some updates in general in the kitchen today. We've completed all the drywall, we're installing ceramic tile. We have over $400,000 worth of food service equipment that's sitting in a warehouse, waiting for the opportunity to install that. And then this photo right here in particular, so one of the questions that was asked was about the hot meals. So yes, the opportunity for hot nutritious meals is being provided. The food is being prepared at Dogan Middle School. It is loaded on a heated and sealed container that is cleaned periodically. They load that on a truck and drive it three minutes, unload it at Tyler High, and they place it on the warmers at the serving lines. So what the serving line looks like is we have hot food option and a cold food option. So if the student wants a ham sandwich, they go to the cold food side. If they want the pizza or the taco or the, whatever the hot meal is for that day, they go to the hot.
Broccoli beef, noodles, fried rice, egg rolls.
That's correct.
That was a meal a week ago.
And they do have Taco Day, just to clarify that as well.
All right.
So.
Go back to that temperature picture right there?
That was 140 degrees, I believe.
Okay. And those are net health compliant?
Correct.
I can imagine if we weren't net health compliant, we would be shut down just like any other place that was trying to serve food that wasn't compliant with the regulations of the county and the city, et cetera.
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
Both facilities have been reviewed and inspected and periodically get checkups from net health and we've passed all inspections, so.
Let me add a little professional experience commentary here. Eight years ago, I was involved in a pretty, pretty big tragedy and we had to do a lot of this stuff the same way to feed kids so that we could actually get their meals in them every day. There are things that happen, whether it be construction related or a tragedy like we had in West Coma, Texas eight years ago. To be able to transport that, we do have to meet all the standards of the health inspection department in regard to that. Same thing you do for catering services and others. So this is not extraordinary for Tyler, Texas in regard to trying to do this. What do you think they do when you have a school destroyed by a hurricane or whatever or other tornado? You're going to wind up having these instances to where you have to do some of this. The thing with ours is it just takes 13 months to build and/or renovate a kitchen.
18 months.
In cafeteria, excuse me?
18 months.
Okay.
And I will, I'm just kind of going down a checklist and I'm hoping by the end.
So it's 18 months to renovate a kitchen? So you couldn't do it in two, like in the summer?
I wish I could, sir.
So that wasn't an option? It's got to be done sometime, you can't do it in two months.
That's correct.
To get the kind of kitchen we deserve, it's 18 months.
That is correct.
Okay.
Would it have been that on the front end of the places or the back end?
Right. And that's what I was, my next question was, was this, and I do remember, I had the fortune of being here while we discussed our plans for these projects. So this was, luckily, it was something we could have prepared for unlike a hurricane or a tornado. We actually had a plan. We thought about this plan and this was the best option. So it was the plan from the beginning.
In 2016, yes.
You know, and it was discussed in meetings. It was made public, our meetings are public. So I do remember sitting here going, dang, well, okay, if that's the way we have to do it, then we'll do it that way.
Mr. President, could I insert just one question here? What's the, do you remember, Mr. Beddingfield, the number of phases to this project? It's a mind-boggling number.
Oh, do I remember, sir. I live it every day. It's 12 phases. We've actually completed up to nine. We're in Phase Nine at this point.
Thank you. Sorry. No, it's okay. I know taxpayer money was mentioned and in my mind, you know, it would be a little bit wasteful to build a temporary kitchen on location, not in the place where the kitchen is attached to the cafeteria. So if we built a temporary kitchen on location, we would still have to transport the food to the cafeteria so kids wouldn't have to walk to said temporary kitchen through construction, through dust, wearing hard hats to get it. So it seems to me it would be wasteful to build a temporary kitchen only to tear it down when the kitchen is new. Therefore, the other question that was asked maybe was why Dogan? Why Dogan? And I think I have a sneaking suspicion that all of our other campuses, our kitchens are being used during the day to feed kids on those campuses. So Dogan was vacated, we had a kitchen over there, so hey, we could use that commercial kitchen. Seems like it was rather fortuitous for us that we had a facility three minutes away that we could cook in and deliver hot food every day. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
And we also had to get help for a minute.
Thank you.
We never, when we, while Dogan is closed, we never dismantled the kitchen. So it's actually, it was great that we had that facility. As you mentioned, all the other campuses are serving the kids on campus. So it was a very fortunate thing that we actually had that kitchen and could do this.
Okay, and we did get permits and from net health, everybody.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
The taxpayer thing on this?
Yes.
Let's go back all the way to 2017 when we were talking about what this was going to cost the community. And man, it was tight. The number that this board gave us to create these two projects, I believe that y'all are going to be really happy in regard to the high school campuses that you're going to wind up with. But let's remember, it would have cost us another $75 million to, or so, to find another location and relocate both high school campuses. So at the will of the community and said what they said they would support to rebuild our schools where they were located, saved our taxpayers tremendously if we're going to be worried about our back pocket. And I'm a taxpayer here too and I see my tax bills and what they are. And so I want to make sure that if we're talking about the last four years, because it really takes this long to build a high school, we've got to remember the decisions that we made to do that were in the best interest of the taxpayer to come up with some incredible facilities. And it does take a little bit of logistical planning and phasing to be able to pull this off. So just wanted to make sure that we, don't leave out the fact that we stay committed to the locale that we have both of our high schools at right now.
Okay, thank you. That's like all the questions I, so they are getting a hot meal. This was a plan from the beginning, it was discussed in meetings, they're healthy meals, they're net health compliant. It was done at Dogan because that was the plan all along. We had available kitchen there and it's about a three-minute drive from Dogan and these kids are getting a catered meal. It's the way I look at it, they're getting a catered meal every single day, just like we get at any luncheon or anywhere else.
Depending on if we catch the light at the loop.
Depending on the lights.
What is that? 110?
Yeah. And then there's an order, you mentioned phases, there's an order to building a, you know, a big high school, right? So maybe an athletic complex being on the exterior can be built at the same time that you might be doing some interior renovation. It doesn't mean it's more important, but it does mean that why would we wait if we can do it right now? So we got August of 2021 staring down at us and we got to hit it. So we got to get everything done in the timeframe we're allowed and.
You bring up a good point. We have a lot of the same contractors working on, subcontractors working on both jobs and trying to organize them. Because we're in East Texas and we want to make sure that people in East Texas were working on our projects, that the money stayed in East Texas. We had to coordinate that between both campuses as well. So while a football facility might have gone up first on one side of town, we're still waiting on the other side of town to get it up. waiting on the other side of town to get it up. While we might have had two operational gyms at one side of town for the last two years, we may have only survived with one gymnasium at another location. So there's a lot of coordination on this in regard to subcontractors and the phasing. We have the same builder, WRL, that's able to kind of watch our backside on that as well. So yeah, there's a lot of logistical planning that goes on in this that may have, may or may not have contributed to the actual phasing in of certain facilities, not just the cafeteria.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I do want to say I'm glad a couple of people stuck around to hear some of this stuff, because it's really important to me that the public does hear and that there aren't any rumors, especially about, you know, even if it regards slightly us not caring about kids, because we've got, I've got kids in the district and several of us do, and we're here to look after every single kid. And in this situation, it was the best that we could do. And they're going to have a Taj Mahal of a kitchen in there come August. So artists, you have something to say?
Just to clarify, when did the construction of the kitchen start? Do we know?
That was May of 2020.
Okay. Why did it start in May 2020?
Well, per the phasing plan, of course, the intention was to start after school was out in May.
Okay. But we started earlier, right?
That's correct.
And we started?
A few months or almost spring break.
Okay. And that was because of actually the school being shut down because of COVID? So we had additional two months at least that we started the project earlier than was expected? And up until that point, we had been utilizing the kitchen at John Tyler, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that a bit, I'm sorry. Go.
We weren't on the board at that time. We did come visit because the community was concerned, and most importantly, the students were happy. You know, you talked to the students, and they didn't complain, and they weren't upset, and they were communicating, and they were having fun at the table, and they were doing things that they would do in a normal cafeteria. So they weren't saying, we don't have anything to eat, it's cold.
And during COVID, you know, that's, you know, they were still having their fun in their school.
With their friends, they were eating, and they did not say that it was nasty and I found a roach in it or any of those things.
You bring up a good point. You know, that was one thing we did do. The video addressed it, that we roughed in all new MEP for the kitchen, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing down there. And I'm just going to tell you that some of, we've had to deal with some things prior to this that were not comfortable in regard to some of the sewer lines and the drainage of some of the other plumbing that was there. So this was very advantageous for us to be able to put in all new in there as well.
Can I add something to that? To answer your question, Mr. Nissen, when we're doing all the planning, and whether you're building a new school or you're remodeling existing or even spaces with new additions, you always want to consider the relationship of spaces. So we always try to keep our noisy areas away from our academic areas such as athletics and fine arts. In the kitchen and cafeterias, Dr. Crawford had mentioned, we didn't have another $75 million to go build a Tyler High somewhere else, but when you take your facility and you have the good bones that Tyler High structure has, and in proximity to where the kitchen is right now and the cafeteria and what's surrounding around it, like the service drives and all that, we have to take every bit of that consideration. And right where that kitchen is, is the most conducive space for us to have it and build a brand new, like you say, state-of-the-art kitchen. You guys saw it, and it's going to be fantastic once we're done. All those things are the reason why.
Mr. Loper, I'll just say this. You've been here since day one, since this community started this initiative with the building of our schools.
Yes, sir.
And you and your team, whatever that teamwork was made of this time, we've got two fine individuals here on our high school projects. How impressed I am, not being from Tyler, but being here for the last seven years, to know that you have a place in your heart to make sure that all of our campuses have equity in them.
Absolutely.
And all you got to do is look forward. I always say this when people try to talk to me about this stuff. Douglas, Orr, Woods, Jack, we've been very serious and very strategic and prescriptive about equity within our school facilities. We've got two great school facilities in our high schools. So I can see where Mr. Bergfeld gets a little sensitive whenever we start making some of these, I think, pretty empty accusations here when you start looking at the facts. And so I want to say thank you for making sure that we walk in there, we have a standard of what our middle schools need to look like, what our elementary schools need to look like, and what our high schools need to look like. That's equity, in my opinion, in regard to facilities. So thank you for whatever you, for your project management and this, along with your team throughout the years.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford.
Any other questions or comments about Tyler High or Legacy Construction updates? We appreciate y'all. Thanks for those extra slides, too.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to high school voter registration update.
Mr. Bidder's going to be walking up to the podium here, as he's been charged to carry out this statutory requirement here for the school system. Remember, we had John Landis, who was our, used to work in central office, that used to manage this for us. He no longer works for our school system this year. Mr. Bidder has been charged with this compliant task, along with Mr. Jones and the high school principals. Here's your update for voter registration.
I miss John Landis. But your high school voter registration update for spring of 2021, you do have there a copy in your packet, copy of that statute there, what we're required to do. And numbers, you were presented the fall numbers, I believe, in October or November. And so you see those there at the top, and then you have a chance to look at the spring numbers for Tyler High School, Tyler Legacy, and our early college and Rise Campus. Had some decent success there. It's about 38% across the district when you total that up. And then we have another 150 to 200 kids who will become eligible, who will become eligible following that last date. A little bit about kind of what we've done. Really have made sure that we've directed those voter registration resources to the campuses. There are obviously a lot of resources out there in regard to this effort and what goes on in this realm, and so trying to make sure that we do that, and certainly without, you know, politicizing those types of things. But make sure our kids are aware of what's going on out there, what's available to them, encourage them to get involved and engaged, you know, locally, and make sure that they're ready to do that, to exercise their right to vote. Make sure our campuses have eligible student lists, know who it is that's turning 18 and when, who we need to target there, and then a little help from communications on the, you know, on that aspect of it. You know, kids, they respond to other kids, and certainly they love the social media world, and so our Tyler ISD Instagram and Facebook stories got taken over by our kids for about a week, just with seniors encouraging their classmates to get registered, exercise their right to vote, get engaged in that process. One of the things that Mr. Jones and I have talked about, and also with high school principals, is really just the need to make sure that they coordinate that effort on their campus and make sure that we have all of those resources that are available, those things are going on. Currently, we've got assistant principals and senior sponsors and counselors involved in that, making contacts with kids. We've got some, you know, resources available to them in our go centers for our outgoing seniors and college-bound kids. Classroom teachers where it applies, certainly senior seminar, that PATH class that you guys have approved for us will be a place where this certainly will be relevant. And then, and one of the big things for me as a campus principal has always been student ownership and student leadership. And so I think that that is something that we always want to try to find an opportunity for. We've got fantastic kids in our school system, and so it may not always be, student council is up there, but it may not always be the same leaders that we see as the face of certain things. But any opportunity that we have to engage our kids in leadership experiences, especially ones like this, where they may not take advantage of their right to vote if they don't get engaged at this time, are very important. And so we'd like to see those play out, look at a little bit of a coordinated approach there, and make sure that that's ongoing for our seniors and anyone that it applies to. Okay?
If Mr. Lane and Dr. C. and Ms. Hortman, who will be ECS HS principal next year, and Mr. Floyd are watching, as they sometimes do, I found out that our principals like to watch these at night. It's kind of scary. But they're going to own it, and we're going to invite them next October, next April to present this data as opposed to this. It needs to be pushed down to the campus. They need to be responsible for it. That's what the statute says. So us managing it central office and coming to y'all with decent numbers, I think those numbers can be better if there's a little bit more ownership at the campus level in regard to making this happen. I will say this, some of our students are a little anxious about filling out some government paper.
Yeah.
From all over the place. You'd be surprised on some of the things that we ask our kids to do, whether it be voter registration or the FAFSA, and sharing IRS information from some folks. Some folks don't want to share that information. So in saying that, I think that is one hindrance that they need to overcome to register to vote. Some of our other kids are already registered to vote because you can register to vote when you sign up for your driver's license. And that usually occurs at age 16, I believe, right? Where you say, once I become an eligible voter, can you sign up then? Is that right or no?
You have to get a new driver's license when you turn 18.
That's what it is, okay. I couldn't remember what happened with Jackson. So those are some of the things we hope that we can overcome at the campuses.
Yes, sir.
Question. Are organizations, community organizations allowed to go onto the campus and register students to vote? I've been asked that, and I don't know how to answer.
The statute says that we're supposed to do that, and I think that's because they want to keep this thing as politically neutral as possible, in my opinion. Not saying that the organization that may have approached you is political, but I think if we open it up for one, you may wind up having some of these others that do that. So this is why we took hold of this, because we were having some of those door knockers at our campuses that were politically charged. Statute says we're responsible for it. We took the bull by the horns. That's why we're presenting to y'all twice every year in regard to this.
Great.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. All right. We also have a couple of discussion items, one being school board member training.
Statute in the Texas Education, Texas Administrative Code for the State Board of Education, 61.1B, there's a rule that we have to publicly post y'all's training hours every year and announce at the school board meeting if y'all are compliant or not. And we are pleased to say that y'all have all finished your required training for this school year. So congratulations. We're proud that y'all have set through those rigorous virtual classes this year, and look forward to many in-person opportunities for y'all, because I think y'all found that it is more valuable to be able to get in there and mix it up with other trustees. But congratulations on that. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Washman, if you want to make some other commentary.
Well done. I'm thankful I served on the board where everybody's getting their training done. So anybody have any questions or comments on that before we move on to local, what, local policy, FFAC, or first reading?
First reading on here, this is actually for the Wellness and Health Services. This is Rachel Barber has brought this forward to us. Again, we've talked about this the last couple of meetings. TASBE goes back and forth on what they allow you to do depending upon what type of paralegal or attorney gets hold of that policy down in Austin. And they've come back with this. We actually are bringing this to the board so that we can do some type of over the counter proctoring of some medications to our kids if they need it, again, with parent approval, obviously. So there is some policies that do restrict districts all the way from, that they just don't choose to do it at all. But that's what we're bringing to y'all is to actually have the, those changes approved, what we've been doing in regard to something like an over the counter ibuprofen proctored to a student if the parent gave permission and couldn't get there for that.
I read through it. I didn't see where it was just over the counter, because there are other medications that kids take. Is, are we, is it just going to be like it has been? Is that what we're saying?
That's what we're striving for. We're not adding to. We're trying to combat the policy revisions from the Texas Association of School Boards.
That are restricting.
Right, that are more restricting. We're trying to go with the status quo, what we've been doing per the recommendations from our Director of Health Services, Rachel Barber.
Okay.
Good question.
My question was, in regards to the EpiPen and things of that nature, it's required that we have people on the campuses trained. How many people do we normally have on each campus? Do you have any idea?
I'd be speculating, but it's more than one.
Okay, it has to be.
Yeah, obviously, it's not just the nurse.
Ms. Barber might have.
Oh, I didn't see you here, Ms. Barber. Come on up.
Yes.
We always welcome the opportunity to talk to this lady because she's had a heck of a year with COVID.
We actually train every single staff member.
Okay.
Everything, everybody from custodians, teachers, principals, bus drivers, everybody, because we want, the required law says that we have to have somebody on campus every time there's an event that is trained, and so just in case that that's the person they're trained.
Great, great.
And in response, Mr. Bergfeld, we're not doing ibuprofen. It's for the over the counter meds like hydrocortone cream, triple antibiotic ointment, sting relief wipes, and burn gel. We've had those in our campuses for about two years already, and then TASBE decided just to take that out and not allow that, so.
But prescription meds through a doctor?
Always allowed.
Go through the nurse?
Yes, sir. As long as we have a doctor's order for it.
Hey, on the EpiPen, there was one, like a may and a shall and an if that they, that we talked about. Just talk to the board about that. That's pretty important.
Yeah.
Remember they, I'd have to get to the EpiPen part.
Page 45, maybe? Let's see if that works.
Gina, remember what I'm talking about?
Okay, on page 44, maybe?
The may and the shall is where they were talking about the athletic program.
Right, page 45.
Okay.
The shall and the athletic.
The athletic programs are allowed to purchase the ibuprofen and Tylenol, and they are covered under a doctor's order.
That's where, okay. That's it. All right.
For the EpiPens.
That's 44 and 45, talk about those two items that I mentioned.
Yeah, the ibuprofen, the one thing we're talking about was on the trainers. Remember, they're certified athletic trainers, so they do have medical training on that. And TASBE was recommending not, I guess, to have that as part of it. We thought that that was important for us. We've got pretty good athletic trainers here. We can really.
Under a doctor's order.
Right, under a doctor's order.
States licensed athletic trainer.
That's correct.
Thank you. We'll take a look at it. First reading, as always. If you have any questions, reach out to administration. Moving on to future business, we have a May workshop and regular meeting. We also have a couple of elections coming up that a couple of board members are going to enter in. Best of luck to both of you. I know it's been a, campaigns are never easy, so good luck in those upcoming elections. But yeah, we have a May 6th board workshop and a May 17th regular meeting.
And for graduations after that, to celebrate a great year in May, unlike last year, we had to do it in June.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, we were just proud to pull off a graduation last year.
We really were.
It was a big deal. Okay, well, all that being said.
If we want to acknowledge, we got a candidate in the audience.
What's that?
We have a candidate in the audience running for the district. Is that three?
Okay.
I think so.
I'll go ahead and take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.